Please rise. Mr. Martinez, may I have a roll call? Yes. Mrs. Byes.
Here.
Mr. Jody. Mr. Kurtz.
Here.
Mr. Martino here. Mr. Okus O'Neal, here. Mr. Rathgut.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Radowski.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Okay, the procedures for public participation are printed on the inside of the agenda. At the appropriate time for public comment, please. If you haven't already, please sign in the back. When you approach the microphone, sign in there also. And you'll have three minutes to address the board. Also, for, just for information. We've been putting the public documents attachments on the website. And there's also a copy of the public attachments in the folders on the back table. So if you want to see what these attachments are, they're available for your view. We do have one agenda headed. Please add under number 12, Programs, Letter P. Approve the service agreement with Perkins, Depp, and Hard Adherence Services for interpreter services as presented, which is Attachment 13. Okay, the announcement that a closed-door session was held before this meeting. So to receive a report from Mr. Thompson on the district building analysis that you're having in perform for us. So this is, we'll be announcing shortly some public meetings that will be scheduled in which the information will be shared with the public as well. Are there any public comments on any of the agenda items? Seeing none.
Mr. Wolf. 13A, all should be renewed at the Policy Committee meeting once canceled.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Byes. And it is under 13, yeah, 13A. Okay, moving to six, the superintendent's report.
Okay, we have the final report for the United Way campaign. This year, the Daniel Boone Area School District earned $6,257,000. Also, tonight.
I think that's, you missed a comma. It's 6,000.
6,257,000.
That would have been a great, great.
6,257,000, not 600. My mistake. That's all I have.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Curriculum instruction?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We met on December 27th before the special voting meeting to discuss two things which came up during special voting meeting. Those being the aquarium project, which was approved and worked. The course selection catalog for the high school, which was subsequently approved at the special voting meeting. And one of the highlights of that course catalog is that two new advanced placement courses will be offered in the Daniel Boone Area School District next school year. Our next meeting will be on January 1st, year 16.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Is there any public comment on curriculum instruction? Seeing none. Building and grounds?
We did not have a facilities meeting at this one, but currently throwing out some days for facilities to be, and this is without the, I don't know, so you should have.
Thank you, Mr. Radowski. Is there any public comment on buildings and grounds? Seeing none. Moving to finance. Mr. Martino?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. There's a couple motions on here that I believe we're approving tonight.
Yes.
Or voting on.
Yes, the ones that are listed as motions to approve. They're approved.
That's down for.
They're separate?
That's under 14.
Okay, well, from A to G are all items that will be voted on then at the next meeting. So I'll move right on to H, to the Finance Committee report. We had a Finance Committee meeting on January 7th. And there were several topics of discussion. Items 1 and 2 were basically budget updates for the 15-16 budget year and the 16-17 budget prep. The 15-16 budget year, the state has released some money. Not all of it. I venture to say about 45% of our annual funds. According to Mr. Small, I believe that does take us through most of the school year. So we should be okay for the 15-16 school year, assuming the legislature approves the rest of the money sometime this school year. The 16-17 budget prep. The board had previously voted on whether or not to have a preliminary budget that raises taxes. The preliminary budget at this point in time calls for raising taxes from 28.96 mils to the index, which would be 29.8867 mils. And with a Peasars exception, to take it to 30.7167 mils. That's if the preliminary budget is what's submitted in June. We also discussed a couple real estate tax appeals and tracking how grant money, once it's approved, is actually used. And we discussed going forward with a healthcare consultant to discuss our healthcare participation in the Burke County Consortium. The next budget meeting, all the finance meetings will be held on the first Thursday of each month. And that's the finance report.
Thank you, Ms. Martino. Is there any public comment? Just a few findings about the refunds. Mr. Small might address this, Mr. Wolf. But the, so I got the first, so there's two, C and D, so D, I gathered, was recaptured. Maris broke up their law or something, so that money was recaptured by the tax on E lot. Is that correct, Mr. Wolf? Okay, so that one was pretty self-explanatory. So, C was a refund for $1,541. And I saw the reason on there was because the property was reassessed due to a fire. So I guess my question is, at some point, I would think this property would be rebuilt, or is there insurance, or? But how does that get taken into account? When do we, you know, do they actually come to us and say, hey, we rebuild the property, you tax, tax us whatever? How does that?
Well, until such time as the Burke Assessment Office does a reassessment, we just do building, there's, there's, we do assess value back on the rules. We wouldn't have any control over that until something, something happens and the building stays in its current status. We'd be at the same, reduce the assessment.
My other question was that, I saw on those that you have 40 days to appeal? Yeah, 40 calendar days. And these are back in September, so we're just saying, oh, now, so assume that there wasn't appeal, you'd be made that, that this office would be handling that? Or I was curious of why, why, you know, we're getting some kind of.
I don't have an answer, but I'll give you a little more. Only when we get into this appeal process, solicitors track these files for appeals as necessary, but I'll find out more.
Okay. What's the process for somebody to appeal their assessment? How, how is it?
I can tell you. I've done it twice. You have to have a real, really basically give you the assessed value, you go, I mean, actually, Montgomery County put out a booklet that tells them how to do it. And walks you through it. Because, but it's not, or if you bought it for certain price, you can appeal it if you bought it too. But it's not extremely difficult usually.
Can I take a nap? Feeling?
Just never knew how that.
As far as, the county's usually really good on tracking buyers. Once, if they pull building from it, they will, they will allow and drive by and assess and.
Is there any other board comment? Any public comment on finance? Seeing none. Presentation by board members. Mr. Martino, do you have the secretary's correspondence?
Yes, I do, Mr. Wolf. It's a letter I received titled, "Concerned Taxpayer's Letter to the Daniel Boone School Board." And it says, "Mr. Martino, I cannot be in attendance at the school board meeting on Monday, January 11th. Would you please read this letter to the directors and have it entered into the record?" It's from Larry Speed, a resident of Douglasville. And I will forewarn you, it's a scathing letter. It's dated January 10th. It says, "To all Daniel Boone Area School Directors, You have voted to increase school property taxes to the Act 1 index. I am sick and disgusted by your decision. I only wish I could be there in person to look at each of you in the eye and tell you this in person. Unfortunately, I cannot be there because as a commissioned salesperson, I have to work and earn my commissioned dollars. It's obvious those directors that voted in favor of this increase have forgotten or don't give a damn about the other residents in this community that are working overtime or multiple jobs to pay for bloated teacher salaries and Cadillac health plans. Make no mistake, this tax increase is covering the astronomical cost of the DBA contract. If you don't believe it, look at the step increases, look at the increased salaries over the last five years. Look at the healthcare plan that I doubt anyone in this audience tonight enjoys, except the members of the DBA. One more point, one of your fellow board members is married to a teacher. He has a financial interest in raising everyone's taxes to support his life salary. The teachers' union supported another board member. Do you believe he is going to vote against their wishes? Here's another point. Not one cent of this increase will go to any program for the students in this district. Okay, here's another point. There's a real estate assessment inequity in this district that's as wide as the Grand Canyon. If you live east of Route 422, you're paying, relatively speaking, next to nothing. If you live west of Route 422, you're paying your share plus some amount to make up for the inequity. How many board members live east of Route 422? Let me see a show of hands. I had a DBA supporter tell me several years ago I should have known what I was paying in school taxes. The fact is, I did know and I can afford it. What I and my fellow taxpayers are not prepared for is year-over-year school property tax increases that do nothing for the students in this district. Here's a few suggestions. Outsource whatever you can to reduce the financial burden going forward. If the service does not benefit the education of the students, get rid of it. Hold the line on teacher salaries, no increases, have them pay more in co-pays and deductibles. Take whatever you can out of the fund balance. Start laying off staff and teachers. If you think these suggestions are crazy and draconian, I don't care. I make these suggestions knowing that I have a child in this district that will be impacted by these suggestions. However, to simply raise taxes that will never go away as a solution is shirking your responsibility to all the citizens of this district. Respectfully submitted, Larry Speed of Douglasville."
Is that it? That's it. Burke County Intermediate Unit report?
There was no IDA accepted.
Assume the same is true for First Grade Technology.
Well, we had, we had a brief meeting in early December to reorganize, so the chair, first man, the vice chairman are the same, and Lloyd Adams.
How many consecutive years, Mr. Manbeck?
A lot, so at least six, right? So.
I think Bob Hackman is the.
Bob Hackman is the vice chair. And other than that, they approved a Perkins grant and related budget, and they approved a resolution of closing out a bond redemption fund because they didn't need it anymore.
One thing, I think since we have some new board members with us, including a new superintendent, would be helpful to organize a board meeting at one of the, I guess, the E Center. To allow them to showcase, you know, their school and what they do and the services they offer. Plus, you can't argue with the.
I'm sure they'd be happy to do that, so, you know, I can certainly ask at the meeting, Dr. Craig, to reach out to Mr. Anderson. What on that, maybe for the.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Student Government Report.
Just press the button.
Hello. My name is AJ Carr. I'm student government vice president, and I'm here to deal with you guys about the state of the school and the revamped system of student governance. I first like to thank you, the board, for allowing my realization to take the time to meet with you guys tonight. And with that said, I would like to first start by saying that this year has been incredibly exciting. A lot of big things have been happening and changing. Originally approved a Korean project for our Greek team has begun to go underway. Mans are being made for that. Our high school lift up, which is basically a school-wide lip singing video, was created to kind of raise the school spirit. It's a great body that we put together, and the link to that can actually be found on the Daniel Boone Area High School Facebook page. Our marching band won the Calvica of the band 2015 Class 8 Championships, which is a statewide competition for them. The academic challenge has been on a great run, they're featuring their most recent match. Also, Sarah Hodgynowski was recognized at the Daniel Boone High School candidate for Outstanding Women's Competition. She represented us extremely well in that competition. The DVHS musical this year is high school musical. And this year also, there's been a new system as far as how auditions work. The new approach is a holistic scoring by a panel of judges to kind of give the reward field to what that process was like. Also, as far as service goes, the interact senior citizen luncheon took place before grade. And that was when we, the high school students invited senior citizens from around the area to join in with us for a meal. And that was accompanied by performances by a select chorus, who sung Kisses Carolers as well as their Christmas repertoire for the citizens. Our blood drive this year was highly successful, where we had 378 registered donors, as well as 336 units collected. Now each unit is, it's got to save three lives, so when you put the math together, we're saving over 1,000 lives, which is something really, I think we can all be proud of. It's an incredible goal. Now, as far as the new system of student council goes, in prior years, it was much more like a high school club. Whereas what we've done this year is taken it to make it more of something that seemed a reward, remote the civics idea that you would find in modern day government, where it's a school-wide elected body, where anyone can run as candidate for home representative. And each homeroom would have a vote on two candidates to submit to the body. That body is elected annually, and any, once that body is put together, any members can then run for office based on years of school and how many have been in the club. Also, those that students are part of the meetings, we meet once a quarter, and they are given voting privileges, as well as they are intended to bring ideas that the students that represent have for to the meetings, as well as take information back to them. Bylaws for this club is the only thing that has yet to be created as far as legislation goes, and that's planned by the end of the year. And finally, I'd just like to once again thank Mr. McKnight, the Daniel Boone High School administration, and the board for allowing me to meet with you here tonight. Thank you.
Very well presented, Mr. Carr. Okay, Legislative Report.
As usual, there is very little being accomplished in Harrisburg. We have three separate factions. The governor, the state senate, and the state house, none of whom seem to be able to come to an agreement. And I figure the best thing I could do tonight, for the sake of the public, is read a report that we all received this morning from the Pennsylvania School Board Association, which has sued Governor Wolf and the legislature over the budget impasse. And it says, "The Pennsylvania School Boards Association sued Democratic Governor Tom Wolf and the Republican-controlled State House and Senate on Friday, saying it's illegal and unconstitutional to withhold state and federal school aid during a budget impasse. The lawsuit, which also named Secretary of Education Pedro Rivera and State Treasurer Timothy Reese, asked Commonwealth Court to prevent the state from withholding the dollars. It also seeks damages for the loss of investment income and borrowing costs while school districts went six months without eating. The organization's executive director, Nathan Mainz, said schools have borrowed nearly a billion dollars to cover costs during the impasse. What we are witnessing is a complete failure of our state government to fulfill its constitutional duty to ensure that the education of our children is not interrupted, Mainz said in the statement. In his statement, the Democratic governor said he shared the school board association's frustration and that he is swot for, quote, "historic increases in education funding at all levels since day one," end quote. GOP lawmakers have criticized Wolf for creating a crisis that could have been avoided if he had not vetoed the entire budget package they sent in when the last fiscal year ended in June. Wolf authorized about $7 billion for schools last week, after a record-long budget stalemate with a Republican-controlled legislature dating back to July 1st. However, Wolf also vetoed about $3 billion, leaving schools with about six months of retroactive funding for operations and instruction. It raises the possibility that schools could see another budget crunch in the coming weeks, putting pressure on lawmakers to increase the amount they're willing to approve for schools. Some school districts had warned in December that they may remain closed after winter break, and some worry they will be unable to borrow more money to make payroll in January. Wolf's bipartisan budget deal struck in November with House and Senate leaders had promised $350 million more, a 6% increase for public school operations and instruction. The Republican-crafted budget bill sent to Wolf's desk last month delivered $150 million more. All told, Wolf has vetoed parts or all of three Republican-written budget plans sent to his desk, saying the GOP is shortchanging schools and social services and failing to address a long-term deficit that has damaged the state's credit rating. Republicans have accused Wolf of holding schools hostage." The only thing I'll add to that, the money that the governor has released has not been distributed according to the formula that had been being used. It was distributed according to a Governor Wolf-induced formula, which sent more money to some schools and less money to others. And we're one of the less money schools so far. That's the legislative report.
Thank you, Ms. Martino. Student Board Representative Report.
Hello. Hey, the night so long. Okay, so just a few things since AJ got to you guys this week, I have to come up with some more. We had our Boone Scott Town a couple nights ago, and that is in honor of Relate for Life. So if you're going to be part of Relate for Life, you go to town. The students throughout the high school participate in those various acts, and then they perform on, it was Thursday, right? And then the whole school had an opportunity to see all this talent. We have our Public Art Republic Places, they're doing their projects right now in the hallway. So as you walk down the halls, you kind of get to see day by day how they do their art, which is a pretty amazing program. For any student who's not in the art class and interested, they can kind of see the steps and process of the artists. And in addition to that, we had an art show back in December where the students all got to showcase their art, even, it worked in Public Art, Public Places. The Future Mentees List Leaders of America, we had our regionals this past month. And we actually had one of our students be elected as the regional officer. So that was pretty amazing as far as student pride goes. The seniors had their breakfast and home down right before we went on break, so that was exciting for all of us to just kind of relax and ease into the, whatever. And I'm sure you all know, we have our Keystone testing going on last week, and we have it going on this week. So we have the modified schedule that we're hoping to see will follow similar for the test in the future. So we'll keep you posted when everything's happening.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I have a quick question for Ms. Reed. We heard from Mr. Clark about these student government changes. How will your role as student board member be reflected in that organization?
Sure. So basically, last year with this being a program that was just starting up, we didn't really know how to relate to student government. We hadn't existed. So basically, what's happening is Henzie and I are attending all the student government meetings, and we're getting the same information, so we can kind of relay it back to you guys as well. And then anything we hear from you guys, we can relate to them, so you know, obviously, don't all have to come to these meetings and take up all the chairs. And then from what we all collaborate with in the meetings, they'll go down the stretch for the homerooms, and all the students will pass all the work.
Great, because that's what we had anticipated for this program the entire time, filtered that information out and come down. So go ahead and hear that spoken story.
Mr. Okus O'Neal, do you have a Transportation Report?
Unfortunately, we had a, I had scheduled a Transportation Committee meeting that I had to cancel due to a family situation. I will be rescheduling it for sometime later this month.
Thank you. Do you have any other reports? Is there any public comment on any of the reports?
Captain Lee Aubrey, 239 Lilac Lane, the working. Just press the, yeah, there you go. I just wanted to say quickly in response to Mr. Speed's letter to the board, that he was disappointed that he didn't get to, Peter Dilbert himself, I'm also disappointed that I don't get to respond to him in person. Because all the things that he mentioned really came off as more sour grapes for not making the reelection than for actually any interest in helping the students of this district.
Okay. If there's no other comment, we'll move on to personnel. We are going to be voting on these tonight. I understand there's some long-term substitutes that needed to be approved, so we are agreeable to vote on them tonight. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the following reservation retirements.
I'll make a motion for a LOA, please. Or do you just want a?
It's your motion.
I'll go ahead and proceed.
Good timing.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Ms. Radowski, second by Mr. Martino. Mr. Martino, can we have a voice vote?
Questions or comments?
Questions or comments?
I had a question about the leave of absences in Section G1. I thought the board had discussed that we would be getting a brief reason for the LOAs. Are we going to do that? Just to build an education.
Well, right now, we're working with.
Well, right now, we're working with the payroll.
Could you sign on the microphone, please?
Right now, we're working with the solicitor and the business office to determine what we can legally put on the agenda and how the wording's going to work out so we're ready at this time. But it is in the works.
Okay. May I suggest you take a look at the BCTC minutes?
I looked at it, but it's up to the solicitor.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up. Follow-up with Mrs. Bites there. So, under B1A, you know, at what point will we actually get a date that's undetermined as to when the date will come back? So I mean, how, I mean, how open-ended do we believe this?
When we get a date from the physician and/or attending whatever, the person.
I know we, you know, we're something after that person, obviously, but, you know, my question is, you know, how, so is there a policy as to how the weeks will be open, and then will it say, hey, we need a date, or it's, we'll go over to Commonwealth Court and ask?
They can take up to one year.
Currently, they're on unpaid leave, so one year.
Was it a record?
Mr. Rathke, we discussed this when we were preparing the agenda, and the whole situation's being looked at as far as reasons for the request and approvals of the requests, but right now, these are in compliance with what we've been doing.
You know, they are, so we've kind of, this has been something that's kind of been ongoing.
Yes.
It's uncomfortable to see them open-ended. Would it be appropriate to have a date out there and then just have them submit another request so that the Board doesn't just, you know, unpaid leave absence from whenever to whenever? Would that work? You just put six months and then have them request another LOA if it's not enough?
We could do, I mean, we could look into it, but look, maybe a school year, but it's a year.
So should we have the year date on there then to indicate that this is the first time that she is requesting it, December 2, 2012, knowing that she could come back sooner? Couldn't we just put the max out there? This makes me very uncomfortable to approve an absence when no, you know, work is due to time.
I'm putting down what's given to me legally by a physician and/or professional.
I understand that. What is our obligation?
When I have pressed individuals, I was told, that's what my doctor said, and that's what you're going to get. Because I have pressed.
Well, you do that with the solicitor then, is that?
Well, it's in the middle of being talked about reasons.
Because this makes us, I mean, honestly, this makes it very difficult for us to operate when we have, when we're anticipating people to be here and they're not here. So then we get into the situation of substitutes or replacements, or not, or temporary folks, or we just kind of make do.
Right.
And a lot of departments are just trying to make do now, or limping to the end of the year. So when a person is pressed on, okay, you have a reason you're leaving, you're not going to disclose why you're leaving, it's a medical reason or a personal reason, can you give us some idea when you're going to return? And the response is, no.
And that's legally sufficient? We have to accept that?
Yes.
We're trying to get a handle on our substitute problem and...
What we do look at, but honestly, what we do look at is, we look at the sick time that's been banked, personal time, so it kind of gives us an idea of how long they'll possibly be out, but if something's unpaid...
It's just the whole substitution dilemma that we're in.
Yes.
And, thank you.
One more, one more follow-up. You, Mr. Harris, I'm sure you were, should have had a thought that we, this is a kind of all-going thing, the one request I had as far as clarity would be just to, you know, this is unpaid, you know, leave, some are eligible with benefits, some are not, they have it listed too, some are, they're still on benefits or whatnot, would also be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
I had a quick question. Looks like one of them is being replaced temporarily, the other three, only one of the three, or one of the four, initially in green, is going to be replaced temporarily, the other three, it may be, but they're not shown yet. It looks like in Section C, there's replacements there for other folks. How do you say this, and if we're going to, are we replacing them, assuming it's involved?
We could, or their work will be absorbed into other areas. So they could be on different agendas where this happens to coincide right now, or in some cases, someone else picks up more of the duties.
Sorry, one more follow-up. Would it make sense then, going forward, to sort of have some continuity between these? It looks like we're approving some in Section C, or something I discussed previously, to maybe go forward to your point, even if it's not a final answer, just say, hey, we may replace them or we may not, something like that, just so we can, I don't know if anyone else feels the same way.
Everybody's replaced, it's just a point of when the person's hired.
So what was said was, everyone is usually replaced, or there's a sub somewhere, just a matter of when they're hired. So if someone takes off tomorrow, we don't necessarily have a person to replace them right away.
We have a day, we have a day-to-day.
Maybe you just need a footnote that the plan is to replace them.
Well, we have a day.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I get it, like, there's a, a good one's lag before you identify someone, but maybe the goal is to replace them or whatnot.
There's a day-to-day sub in some situations until a permanent is hired.
I got you.
That'd be good to have.
I think just, just footprinting what the plan is would be helpful.
Did you discuss any other board comment? Mr. Martino?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Item 11A through C, personnel. Do a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we move to programs. The attachments that we need is our monthly enrollments to the data report. We are going to need a motion for C, D, and E.
I have a motion for A, 12, C, D, and E.
Motion by Ms. Trogowski, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bites. You're out of this fundraising effort for the cheerleader. Thank goodness. No thank you, but anymore. So the agreement with the Commonwealth, is that the same as last year's? This is the, this is the backup services for?
Yes, this, this is cleaned up of an agreement from last year that was improperly signed.
Okay. As I said, cleaning it up, putting it properly.
It'll be for the, till the end of this school year.
Okay, thank you.
The purposes of this could be fill in when our athletic trainer cannot be present having a long, long session. Any other board comment?
I have a comment, a question relating to the agenda itself and having specific items. But would it be possible to have to indicate in moving forward which items we're going to be voting on at committee of the whole, just reading through this, it wouldn't necessarily, I mean, how, why would we be voting on C, D, and E and not F, G, et cetera? I know in the past we used to have special voting meetings and committee of the whole was exclusively for discussion, and although we can equally vote at committee of the whole, it is meant to be messy.
No, that's, that's fair. We could, we could certainly segregate the programs into a special voting section.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Totally agree.
Let me just add, Mr. Kirch, that the reason we're voting on a couple at least tonight, the, the Commonwealth Orthopedic Association, as Mr. Small said, that was improperly signed, so we're trying to clean that up. And the cheerleading trip will take place before our next meeting, so we had to move on that.
In regards to the, the agreement, as in D, for the Reading Area Community College, so as I understand, that's being taught by our teachers, and then is it, they'll get credit, now, that, that credit is just on RAC or that's also associated with other schools, correct?
Yes, yeah, yes. The classes tarred are the general courses where they're easily transferable, so it makes sense for, for us to work with RAC in, in getting with this.
Then, I mean, so are any, there are a few additional costs right now, would the parents have to pay for, for some of these credits or?
Well, they have to pay for the credits, yes, yes.
Now, is there any assistance available, is that, you know, parent is paying for you?
Well, right now, I know we're working with Pell, I'm getting various Pell grants also for that, just like a regular college student, so you're dual-enrolled, you're enrolled here and at RAC.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Harris, a few of us have heard you speak about these joint ventures. Would you just explain them for the entire board and for the public? No, because I think it's very good what you're doing.
All right. Well, this, let me back up a little bit. Mr. McKnight and Mr. Hurley and I have been doing road trips around the county, visiting the local colleges and universities and trying to find opportunities for the Daniel Boone students. I, I forget the first one, we've been doing so many of them, we've been to Alvernia, Quittstown, had a second phone call today with the president of Rosemont University, RAC, Montgomery Community College, and Penn State Berks. All of them have seemed very excited to work with us in various ways. I know RAC is, if I say this wrong, please change, correct me, Preston, but RAC is going to be adopting our business pathway. Rosemont is really interested in STEM, as they said this afternoon, so is Berks County, I'm sorry, Penn State Berks. Alvernia was interested in the media performing arts. Quittstown was interested in a little bit of everything. They had a lot of interns sitting there, so they couldn't make too many decisions. But we will be doing more projects with different universities, we'll be doing dual enrollment, and who knows what else? We're leaving it up to them in some cases to decide and also come here and teach in partnership with our own staff. So we're looking to utilize all of our resources, this building included, where the, was the president of Alvernia or the dean we were with lives across the street and didn't know we were here. And when we started talking, I said, you're my neighbor. So it's very interesting who we're meeting, but I sent an email out today, Penn State is interested in working with us also, so they're all very excited. So there's tons of opportunity.
On January, I think, 26th, which is a Tuesday, we'll be having an evening in the high school to talk about new, new opportunities in the high school, students who do enrollment program, the piano plays, partnerships, and so forth, so it'll be another opportunity to expand the communication to the community. Students will be receiving that information earlier that day, actually, that's me, so that'll be January 26th, I believe it's a Tuesday. So, yeah, there's a lot of great partnerships, and I think that the real power is that these are really very economically or low-cost or cost-neutral type projects. Mr. Martino, you asked me one time about curriculum, and one of the pieces that back towards Amber, who is interested in partnering with our business, the partner leadership, they're going to give our, in partnership with Mr. Mulan, who needs our business partner, the accounting one curriculum for him to examine and engage, and that will turn into a wonderful opportunity, and wants to kind of, kind of just barback. So that, you know, helps them not to, not to rewrite that curriculum in its entirety, but to kind of, you know, basically chiropractic some pieces, which is much more positive than. So there are many, many projects that have gone on throughout this whole process, so I think in the next two years, it's been very impactful.
One more quick question in regard to the specific motion to approve the RAC agreement and dual enrollment. Refresh my memory as to how our teachers, they have to be accredited in the, in the dual enrollment program. Our teachers are teaching RAC courses, what is the procedure for them to get their accreditation?
I can, I think Preston could talk better to that than I am.
So we submit, first of all, a teacher has to be willing to do it, and they have to have at least an advanced degree in the field. So if it's in English, then they have to have a, a master's degree in English, it's not an education degree in English. So that, there's a vetting process that takes place with RAC or any normal partnership, so they take their badges, they look at the transcripts that the teachers have, and every course they take, then they qualify, then they submit a syllabus of the course that they teach. Essentially, it's courses that our teachers currently teach, and the partner in college looks at that syllabus, is this a fit for this particular course that we happen to have in our catalog? And then the teachers actually make an adaptation, and I give credit to our teachers, I mean, there's not a financial incentive to our teachers, but there is a, obviously, prestige in now being an adjunct professor and providing a service to our students. If they're teaching this course, our students are eligible to pay, for example, RAC, I think it's $27 for every credit course, and anybody who's in school, you know, you know that it's several thousand dollars per course. So this ultimately for families, I think we'll go online this year, we're waiting for the final answer from RAC, with about 30 to 36 credits that we're committing this year for students to be able to take.
So 12 courses, roughly?
Yeah, the science courses, because the labs are four credits each, so, you know, they, they, yeah, right, correct.
Around 10, at least 10 courses for next year.
Correct, and this is, and more to talk, so.
Nice.
We're still waiting on a lot of levels for a lot of people, teachers, students, most importantly, families, my actual, of course, you know, cost, college costs, economics, very difficult to meet those costs. So if you can get a year or so done in high school, that's a big help.
Excellent, thank you. Please express our appreciation to the teachers for what they've done so much.
Any other board comment? Mr. Martino, do you have a voice vote, please?
On programs, items 12, C, D, and E, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero.
I'm trying to do some quick numbers under the student enrollment piece, I'm looking at our data, and if I have it right, I'll do it, but I was looking, I was going back to September, that we're, we're actually only down one student in September, and all the grades, so I thought that was nice to see, hey, we're probably.
Maybe we're stabilizing.
Yeah, we were probably down two, but we added two, but, you know. My, my standard is, anyway.
Okay, are there any other comments for items A, B, F, G, and all the way through up? And I would like to thank the Ford for our liaison post for, for their donation, which we've yet to approve, but I think it's roughly, looking at roughly $800, $8500, whatever it is, that's a very substantial contribution. So please, I know it's not official yet, but we'd like to extend our thank you.
I have a couple questions.
Can I ask one about each, or are you?
I'd love, so go ahead, please, I'll take the other one. Could you give us an example?
Well, I guess about my, my, my thought, maybe, maybe you're thinking the same thing, so obviously, nothing's for free, right? So I'm assuming that by using this then as a distribution channel for our, I'm guessing the Tuesday folders, remember all the documents we sent out, saving us some, some fees, some costs and, and that kind of stuff, I'm assuming they're going to take the email list and mark it to that, to that email list, or giving them all the emails for all our families and...
them all the emails for all our families and that's my assumption, I could be wrong, but...
I was waiting for the question because I had a preserved joke for Peach Jar preserves, but it wasn't funny in my head, so I didn't say it, as I thought. Yes, Peach Jar.
Thank you for preserving us from that joke.
Next time I'll turn your mic off. Thank you. Peach Jar is a free service that will allow us to upload all of the things that, well, a lot of the things that go out with the students going home, all the flyers, all the offers that we get. I have a number of things that I get that are in electronic format that it will cost us hundreds of dollars to print and then pass out and then they just end up in a backpack with the trash. So now we're going to have a spot on our website where anyone could go for various tickets or discount coupons or activities, a pancake breakfast at a Dairy Queen this Saturday possibly, if you can print that out and submit. So everything will be electronic, much easier, nothing really should be missed. Everything, there'll still be a folder going home with a lot of students, the younger ones, but not as many things.
So will everyone be getting a weekly email saying this is this week's, where they'll actually physically have to go to this website to actually, if they want to, get these documents? So they might not even know if it's happened, if they go to the website?
Well, it depends on the principal and the teacher. There could be a note, hey, these things are uploaded now, these things are posted, and it's up to you to go get it. And some things are just electronic, where there's a link, and some things you have to print out. But we can offer a lot more variety across the board. So some students may not bring things home and some are a little better. Now, everything can come home. And it's a free service.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to sum it, whether, I don't know, if it's advertising based on the website or where, but if they are collecting data or email addresses, I wouldn't have to be exposed to the parents.
I guess we're saying, why is it?
Well, they don't have to sign up for it.
We are not providing email addresses to this company.
Why is it free then? I think is what we're getting at, right? What's the catch?
They use it to advertise.
But how, are they advertising on the website? Or will they be collecting, like I said, you need to, to get off the website, you have to provide something, the algorithm provides something.
No, not for, not on our side. It's the people who are putting things up also. So there are other advertisements also. It's kind of like Google. You can sign up, you can get on it, but then there's other sites and they could direct you. Am I making sense? Trying to make sense? You don't have to sign up for it.
Well, Google courses, they, you know, they're marketing all the, their information to us, to the company, even though technically you could say it's a wide, you know, type of information. By enough information, then people can actually figure out who you are, because of what you do and it's fine, so that's a whole component.
Yeah, I would just caution the district-wide policy of using that, that there should be some sort of heads up for the families that aren't as internet, you know, concentric, of which I know, so they don't know things are out there. They should get some sort of notifications paper, even if it's a summary, a week summary, a month summary, something so they know those things are out there and save them a little frustration with that. Secondly, in regards to the service agreement with Berks Def and Heart of Hearing Services for interpretive services, I guess like $45 an hour, non-prime time. Any estimate of how many hours per week the student, is it one student that's going to be engaged in the services?
That I don't know.
It's not one student, it's translating, it's for, the conference is up, the conference is in February.
I'm sorry, can you say?
The conference is in February. One of the parents is in need of a translator.
Oh, okay.
So typically, meetings typically run about two hours.
Okay. And then would we need any kind of follow-up to that?
We don't need the service if there's any kind of meeting between school and home.
Okay.
So it's typically conferences and IED.
Okay, thank you. And that was just as much as I can speak to.
Mr. Wolf, one quick question. Aren't we going to vote tonight on the agreement with Benefit Connections?
Which one?
For the evaluation of alternative medical insurance?
H. Yes, I guess we did, made it as a motion. So. Do I have a motion for H, for 12 H?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Martino, second by Mr. Scott. Any board comment?
We had discussed this at the finance committee meeting and there were some questions that I believe Mr. Small was going to address, so I don't know if all those questions are still unaddressed or not.
I think, I mean, I know I had a lot of questions and I think a lot of people answered them, you know. I know that one question, I didn't see an answer to, and I don't know if it was past due and we got an answer was, I think David asked, I mean, obviously we're paying him as a consultant here, if we would utilize one of the insurers that he finds for us or does he then also get paid permission from that? Because that was one more concern.
I also had a question on exactly how, maybe I'm just reading too much, but how it's worded, it says, evaluation of alternative self-funded medical insurance options. Okay, yeah, I was thinking, so obviously one of the potentials is to self-fund, but are the other school options considered self or school?
No.
So should the alternative school, like school trusts and self-funded? I'm beginning to, it means they're.
So they're basically all for 12.
I could amend the motion since I made it to alternative medical insurance options.
They don't get too much.
I mean, that narrows it, then that leaves it raw.
So Scott, you agree to the change in motion?
I have one quick question. Do we, for securing the services in this company, do we, do we look for other companies or how do we get to this point?
We had already used it for one phase, and that's how we moved to this phase, like as far as acquiring other companies we have.
This was a recommendation from Mr. Small I worked with and before, and.
I had worked with him in the past, but he has worked for us on the first phase, so I want to feel different for us.
And there are, I can't answer the question, there are, no, I've worked with him, I've been doing well. I think I have one of their names on my, I have a local site.
Well, now for my service, well, I don't know if that's a good, if it's a fair proposal or not fair proposal, because I, I compare it to.
Well, I guess, because he's worked with us before, he would have a role familiarity with our district and our needs, and it would seem like this type of analysis would take a whole lot of time. But again, I don't know how to really say, just strange design that it costs that much to say, here are your options for insurance for your district, which has worked with us in the past and is our district.
The good thing is he has already taken the time to collect all the past data and already chew through a lot of that. And if you look at the pile of paper that you get out of that, so that took a lot of time already, so that is a benefit that he has, don't think so long to write.
Any other I had, Mr. Scott, is Mr. Small's worked with him in his previous school district and was pleased with the results. Your roll call?
Yes, roll call, vote please.
On the motion to approve an agreement for alternative medical insurance options, Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Ocas O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Radowski?
No.
Mrs. Buddies?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Motion passes five three.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, skipping over policy, any old business?
I do have a question and I don't know if there's any way to appear to answer tonight, but it's kind of on the TV on the radar, as it were. Just wondering, update to the, I believe Mr. McKnight calls it blazer summer, so I'll do that terminology, so.
Very briefly, we have a, Mr. McKnight at the high school, you know, as we have some shift in one, one et cetera, which is where the project would resign, which is a case of modeling, and Mr. McKnight has stepped up, worked with Mr. Schmidt, has worked with him yet, but it's a record decision. Those two pieces need work hand in hand. So the framing is coming together and we will have probably not as big a program as we had originally hoped for. This summer we'll have a program. And again, teachers have been more than willing to engage, I would say, we have probably 10 summer academic programs that teachers have volunteered for. Mr. Schmidt is aligning coaches for athletic camp program. So yeah, I put that in the, the only, because it's a key of the timeline of the piece, the advocacy is moving forward, not February. People have their summer plans and vacation plans, so stay tuned, but yes, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight.
Is there any? Sorry, one thing, any old business, just looking overboard in this Peach Jar and reviewing their materials in the package. It seems that the zero cost is an initial kind of introductory thing they're offering, and if we don't complete all necessary steps indicated in this authorization, which I think might just be signing and sending it in, by February 8th, then we're stuck paying $225 a year. And it looks, I just did some research as well online, that they generate revenue by selling, like if I had a business in the area, I would submit a flyer to them, not literally to school or anything, but they would be able to use their distribution channels to email that out. That's my understanding at least. But there could be a cost here if all materials are submitted. And it seems, it says your quantity for five years, I believe it's listed, so if we do go forward with it in six years, maybe good to reevaluate to see where we are. And I know, back when I first joined the board, we had a contract with Channel One News that they'll be really good about because it automatically will do. And I would hope that we are constantly, our business office and administration is always aware of these contracts that we signed before, could have signed years ago, that automatically will renew unless terminated by one of the parties, and so we'll be one of those similar contracts. So just needs to be aware of moving forward.
So Small, do we allow that term, Berkes, to fill in our contracts where they automatically renew?
Try not to. We have, since I've been here, we try to put a term rather than, for instance, the security agreement in the high school, security agreement in the high school, we put a term date on rather than shall renew automatically.
Because to Mr. Curtis' point, as we get closer to whatever the event horizon is for reviewing that and renewing it, you know, that's something to go up to the board long in advance of that, so we wouldn't automatically be enrolled again without its approval again.
And that was the purpose of the calendar, would bring a little law contract.
So do I understand that correctly then? I think in there it says that we're not allowed to, the district is not allowed to submit a business flyer. But there, so we, your business wanted to submit, because it was Peach Jar and pay for it as opposed to?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's, like, we want to send a business where I wrote the Tuesday folder.
Well, I think as an example, I think, didn't we send one for the martial arts? That's kind of a, yes.
Did we send one for that?
Yes, we did.
I'm not sure we still, though, like, theirs, perhaps we can, like, we could use our channels to submit those things, but not Peach Jar.
Right. I can read that language that I think you're referring to, if you want me to. No flyers from external organizations shall be posted or delivered by Peach Jar without district approval.
So.
District approval.
That's the same process we use now. All the flyers come across my desk, and if it benefits our students in some way, then it's, yes, I have declined them, so it isn't like, I don't know, a local business can start advertising to our students and families without our knowledge. No, everything is still vetted, it's approved, and then it goes up.
There's still question about this, and I have just a little bit of curiosity because it's not really explicitly stated anywhere online that we make money by doing X, which for a business, of course, you want to make money. Maybe a solution might be to call one of these other school districts, I mean, Rosebury is contracting Peach Jar, seeing what their experience is and.
Well, I think, does Wilson, I think Wilson does it? Mifflin?
Governor.
Governor Mifflin does it. And they've been quite happy with it. I mean, I heard about them before I, we started looking at it, and it was a discussion that was something that was wanted to do here, and then just by chance it all worked.
There is one more line maybe I should read regarding email collection. It says, "District will place a Peach Jar logo, logo with a link on the homepage of each school's website and implement secure protocol for e-flyer distribution to parent slash guardian email addresses." Just, we were agreeing to give them, to put the logo out there so parents, parents engage themselves, they would be giving email addresses. They could potentially, it's not the target.
That's how they make money. Other businesses submit things to them, so they could look at the approved Daniel Boone postings, or they could go through a host of other business postings, and that's why there's no cost, they're just trying to increase their distribution.
Yeah, so it's pretty much genuine business, more exposed into the markets of parents who have children in the school system. This is not, if you will.
Or anyone, yeah.
People are looking at Peach Jar.
There are a lot of businesses trying to get into schools, and we have thousands of people, students, families, that they want to market to, and generally, we say no.
So how much money will we save in distribution costs? Kind of curious as opposed to what, not that we've done a very good job at selling advertising, but I'm just curious of how much money we're going to save or suppose we could make if we.
Well, one, the cost of paper, and I think something that we can't really quantify is the time it takes to copy that, a teacher to copy that, pass it out, pack it into a folder, and send it home, because then it's kind of forgotten about. At least now, I'm sure that we can get some data on the click, when people go in, how many people have clicked on it, what works, what doesn't work. So, you know, we don't have that data now. So I think just the teacher, just taking away from their teaching, this administrative work of gathering all these flyers, printing everything out, and then distributing to the students, they don't have to do that anymore. No, not as much.
Yeah, I mean, some of the, the organization will drop off the bundle, that would have to be divided out, etc., but we're not doing all of that, so that's already completely dropped off.
It saves time, administrative costs, teaching costs.
Does someone have to have a student to get that information?
That I don't know.
So in other words, could you just send the school information? So, in other words, could you just send the school information?
I mean, all you have to do is go into our website, you don't have to put a student ID or anything, and you're just going into our website. So, how many people go into our website that don't have kids here? I don't know that. You do? All right, well.
Well, I do have. Moving to new business, there's a motion to approve the registration fee plus expenses for Mr. Ocas O'Neil and Mr. Scott to attend the PSBA New School Board Member Training Conference on January sixteenth. That was another reason we wanted to have this on the agenda, so I'm looking for that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second? Motion by Ms. Tredowski, second by Mr. Rathke. Any voice, any discussion? Have a voice?
Oh wait, I do have something I was supposed to say. I remember, I remember when we, I think it was Mike, myself, and I'm guessing I was at the time, we, well, I think the other folks who weren't here, I wonder. We went up to Mechanicsburg, and Dr. Rado came with us, and I think that was beneficial, having Dr. Rado, because he was actually able to help with the, even some parts, he was able to contribute to the discussion. I don't know if this might be something Mr. Harris would also be interested in attending, and he was speaking for superintendency or something, or, okay, Bill, which I thought it was helpful as a new board member to have superintendent there and have a lot of others, but as well, that's an expense, I thought I'd throw it out there, because it did seem beneficial to me at least.
Road trip.
Mr. Harris, when, when six of us had on the board at the same time, and we attended Mechanicsburg, and Dr. Sankar was the acting superintendent at the time, she attended with us. And I think it was good that she and we heard the same thing at the same time, and it might be especially beneficial to you having come here from Philadelphia, which has no school board, to hear what they're telling the school board members, and it's up to you.
Good trip.
And Schwenchville's not that far.
Take a trip, try the donuts, they provide.
Can I have a voice call motion?
Can you amend that motion to add Mr. Harris' expenses?
I'll amend, I'll amend the motion too. Include Mr. Harris if he can introduce to attend.
Could we put the amount of the, the registration fee at least on the motion? I saw it somewhere.
I believe it was one fifty, I don't know.
At a cost of one fifty per registrant?
You're going to travel costs too.
I'm just saying, registration fee brackets, one fifty. Not too late to sign up for Harris.
They might even have, it might be different if you're a superintendent as well, I don't know if you would pay the same as a superintendent.
Actually, I think it's Schnecksville, not Schwenchville.
It is, it's Schnecksville.
Because I was trying to figure out where they were having the training in Schnecksville.
It's a little north of.
Yeah, if it's Schnecksville, that's a little different travel.
It's not, it's not much.
I gave him directions.
Sir Rathke, you second the motion, you're okay with it?
By voice vote, to approve sending our two new board members and Mr. Harris, if he so wishes, to Schnecksville. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero.
A B graduation date discussion, Mr. Martino?
I was asked by a member of the public when we're graduating, and I said it should be on the website, and they said, no, it's not, so I went look, and sure enough, no, it wasn't. And I assumed it would be June tenth, which is the Friday in the week school ends, and then there was some discussion about it being the last day of school, June ninth. So, it has not actually been decided unapproved, and my feeling is, is that we've been doing it on the Friday of that week and the Saturday morning as a rain date. So, my suggestion is, is that we approve graduation for June tenth and post it as such, so everybody knows.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't, is there?
Just that we get a lot of snow days, and pushes things back, but that's what right now I have.
At least it'll give families a chance to plan, you know, with the target.
It's always listed as tentative, so, it's your guess as well.
I think we also, if my memory serves me correctly, we decided that, because the issue came up, well, what if you push it back to Saturday, and then what if it's raining on Saturday? I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we determined that the tickets would be color coded, and that each student, I think there is you five, and it had to be indoors, they could only use three tickets. So, you have blue tickets and white tickets, and if you have a blue ticket, you got to sit in the auditorium, and if you rained out, and if you're out of luck, you have to watch online.
Do we still have the agreement with Albania to utilize it?
No, instead of paying them either way, I think, for reserving.
No, that was just.
I think that solution worked out last year, is a good one, and the unfortunate event, if we had two days of straight rain, instead of pushing it back and back and back, and the controversy that come with having graduation canceled that happened to fly here, I think that is a good solution, it's great that we can screen it online now.
Well, at least you can solve the problem we have, which is fixing the date.
Yeah, the date two ten.
So.
I would just like to hear from Mr. McKnight, if he has any comments on this discussion.
This is what I'm speaking with, this is Weber, the, as our expert, right? The reason that things are set is because of weather and push it, so we have a lot of snow and snow days, and we push out, going against funding issues from state side, and students don't have ten all day, so, that's why it's not as tough, I would suspect. And Mr. Curtis is right, that we have blue tickets and yellow tickets, we're going after all we screen it, if we, if we have not, take that model, work when you're certain worried about it, and screen it online now. So, I don't have any objections, but it depends on you know, that we may be up against something on funding days, if weather will be a factor.
Oh, we had that issue, what, two years ago? When the state worked something out, maybe on?
Yeah, Mr. McKnight and Mrs. Weber and Mr. Harris, I mean, we discussed this briefly, that for the seniors at least, we could bring them in on Saturdays, if need be, to fulfill their requirements, and another reason to have it on a Friday, is a lot of graduates will have people coming from out of town, and it's easier for them to plan if they're coming through a weekend, rather than midweek.
I think it would be helpful when we draft the district calendar, when the administration grassed in, to include graduation date on there, because just looking back five years now, having served on this board, Derek Howard was taken up by discussion of, correct, when we're graduating, if we noticed to have that, I mean, looking at how we've constantly done it on Friday, taking into consideration the discussions and debates that happened the past few years, I'm just speaking for myself, we've discussed it, it seems, and honestly, it never rates, it seems to come back every year.
Yes, the new calendar for next year does have a graduation date on it, and it says tentative weather, so it was sent out today.
Thank you.
So, we're all agreed?
To set the June tenth, alternate June eleventh.
Okay, I don't think we need a motion or approve that, that's just correcting the administration to designate that date as graduation. Because we're going to approve the?
Calendar.
Going forward, that's next year.
We've always voted on a blank. I mean, I don't care what you do, it's always, it's always been a vote in March and April.
Well, let's just make it official with it.
I'll make motion, are they graduating on June tenth?
June tenth, with a rain date, it'll be eleven.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Tredowski, second by Mr. Rathke.
We've got enough discussion, I take it? By voice vote, and all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight zero.
Any other new business?
I'll just say, the next protocol of administration, sorry, Tredowski, you have something, oh, sorry.
No, you can tell.
Oh, no, go ahead, sorry, I didn't see, okay, I was just going to say that, at the next meeting, I mean, I want to have a discussion about study calls in the district at a school, with the new pathways model, transitioning to, if anybody had real strong feelings about study calls, try to attend NCIB.
Okay, I just wanted to recommend to the board that we institute a, an action item list after each of the meetings. It can be simple to just, in my opinion, just have any outstanding, any new things that have been discussed at a given meeting, who, you know, what the action that needs to be completed before we try to advance any new ideas, might be who's responsible for it, and a tentative date, not a hard date, but just so that, to ensure that we don't overlook things that come up, and then we talk about them, and then they disappear for three months, and then somebody remembers and brings it up. I just think it would, it would obviously increase the likelihood that everything that gets discussed here gets followed through on, and I'd like to make that document available to the public, so that they can see what's been discussed, what we think is outstanding, and that if, for some reason, we don't follow through, they would have the opportunity to say, hey, this has been on the, on this to-do list for quite a while, and there doesn't seem to have been any resolution. You know, so we could use it as a ticker in that way. So, not that, you know, the, who would be responsible for it, I don't know if it would be Sandy, or if it would be Rich as the board secretary, but, like I said, I would just like to recommend that we try to institute something like that going forward.
Rich thinks since, so intent on this that you keep track of it.
Well, could, could it just kind of enroll business, like, have a running agenda, I mean, almost like a, you know, points on the?
The tip we must, is becomes the old business, and it stays there, so, I agree.
That's probably the easiest way to do it, and I think it's something you know, other places that works.
Yep, I love that idea.
That seems reasonable, like I said, I would just want to make sure that the tasks get assigned to some individuals, although, I think there's much greater likelihood that things get acted upon, if we know, if all of us are in agreement, who needs to take whatever action we think needs to be taken?
I think it's a great step towards accountability.
So, what are our action items for?
Well, that was going to be my next question, okay? Who's going to, you know, keep track of the, what comes out of our, our committee meetings, not committee meetings, that's the chairperson, but the, the whole one, the voting meeting. I know Mrs. Kramer takes copious notes.
But she doesn't have access to what you guys talk about behind the scenes, as to what you've followed up on and what you haven't done. So, I can put it on as, like, a follow-up to, tonight is the appeal for forty days, and Mr. Small's going to follow up that, but if he already takes care of it between you guys, behind the scenes, I don't have access to that.
Yeah, but under, under old business, you would just mention that, and Mr. Small would say it was addressed on January tenth, or it's still in process.
As long as, Mr. Wolf, you approve the list?
Yeah, I think that would be my responsibility then, when we're, Ms. Martino, when we're doing the agenda, that we get an update, or we, maybe, like you said, that there's correspondence going back and forth, that somebody's done something, we take care, we got the information, despite requires information, she, I sent it to her, she has it, you know.
That's an excellent idea.
Not to beat up Peach Jar to death, but I, I think I have our answer, I was with the Mifflin website, I thought Peach Jar's, so, and just, I think we should, because there's going to be a change, so community organizations need to pay, so right now, for example, if MBAC would have come in and they, they have basketball signups, they would distribute flyers to the schools, and then they would get them out, so now that MBAC will have to pay for that. So, for each school, it's for one month, its availability is twenty bucks. So, if they wanted to do three schools, it'd be seventy bucks for one month, so, any, apparently, any organization will have to pay for the service to get, to get that distribution, so, that's going to be a change for a lot of community organizations, so, that's something that we should be aware of.
Now, that's only if they're going through Peach Jar, right, like, they can still do it how they've been doing it with us. So, I guess what I'm getting at is if we do use Peach Jar, in actuality, like, it'd be a one-way channel between the district. Like, I couldn't see why would MBAC pay twenty-five bucks per school, where they could just do it the traditional way, in-house, unless Peach Jar prohibits that.
Well, it's not exclusionary, right?
No, that, that would be charged from an outside organization wanting to get their stuff out. For us internal, there's still no charge for us.
Yeah, they only have control over their flag, right?
So, if we're making the announcement that, say, one of these outside groups are having events, they would go through us, and we would post, and they would be free of charge? Think we would be the conduit for having?
So, if we approve it, it's, we would be posting, and then no one would be offended?
Right, yes. The fees for outside?
I don't know, that's not, I'm not sure that's what the website says. But we just want to make sure that we all do this.
But then only action lists, you know, the hidden costs.
Let's move forward with it, and that'll be the first action item list that Mr. Harris has to follow along.
It seems like what they do is just post these flyers online, right, through email, can we do that in-house, can we just put a PDF image of the flyer, like a digital bulletin board on the website, and then we can roll everything?
Well, I, I will say, I don't mean to make more work for Mr. Max, because I just probably owe something, but I have seen like some school districts, I know, Park Valley actually does, they do it, they host a community calendar on their website, disclosure, and so, municipalities, or any of the churches, and Lions Club, whoever has events, they kind of send the flyers to the school, and they, they keep, it's almost like they have a community event calendar too. So, I guess you could, depending if your website can handle that. I guess I'll be in Mr. Max's question.
Sounds like an idea for a high school club.
You're like a year old program.
Not necessarily on our website, but maybe in Google or website, I think in Portal prom.
There's probably a free plugin available online, and I'll do a search later, and I'll send it to Mr. Max, and I find something, but it's as simple as uploading a PDF file. They didn't have the thumbnail here on the website, I say that's simple, but I never read code.
Well, and I will say, in defense of, I mean, school is sort of under the judgment, they have a, they have a PR post, and that's part of their job. So, I'm not saying, you know, it's, for us to have somebody that's going to collect all this stuff and put it in, could be time.
Regardless, what direction we go, though, I mean, even if we do use Peach Tree, somebody's going to have to send the link, somebody's going to have to, there's a file, Apple will data scan it, but I think it would be really beneficial to put some of this stuff online, I never, never really heard of it, but getting it in paper form, and if you lose it, if your child doesn't bring open pieces of paper, it's all online. The only thing that you have to, I don't know, is it's something, it's work doing, whether it's Peach Tree, or whether it's in-house, or another way, it's to be determined, I guess, work doing.
Any other discussion? Anything other than Peach Tree?
Can I make one more announcement?
Please.
The, the policy committee is hoping to finalize work on the fundraiser policy. They got some very good feedback from the public, and the idea has been run by the business department. So, we haven't scheduled that meeting yet, but I would ask the public to please stay tuned if they're in any way interested in coming out and engaging in the finalization of the fundraising policy.
I did want to have my answer on Peach Jar. It represents the? It represents the preserving sweetness of youth, so in case you're wondering why it's called Peach Jar.
That was one great one, actually. I do have something. On this flyer we have from Nutrition Group. Question for Mr. Harris, I know there was a lot of controversy when we switched from Nutrition Group, especially among the employees, part of the district employees. How has that transition gone? Looking through this, it seems, I mean, people, the images of employees are smiling, the students are smiling, I noticed PR kind of, but that's my best view. What has your experience been with staff and students and food quality with Nutrition Group?
Well, it's nine o'clock and I haven't had dinner and I'm looking at the pictures of food, but I can tell you from a person who has two children in the district, they're very happy with the food, especially at the high school, all the options. My son, who's a freshman, comes in and says, hey, you know, this is great, it's the best food he's ever had at, at a school. So, I think they like the food court atmosphere, they like the ability to pick and choose and so far, they really enjoy it.
Mrs. Sweet, since you're, you've been, you've seen the food before and your food now, what is your opinion on? Sorry to put you in a hot seat.
No, it's funny, I mean, I can tell you, we, I am a student, I bought lunch every day throughout high school. There's not much difference they have here and it's been very, um, like accommodating as far as keeping the same situation, the same food options. I will say their food is very different, not necessarily bad, but you can't really compare to what we have, if that makes sense. So, like the students who really, really like it and maybe even they just didn't like the old food and they think people who really, really don't like it because they like the old food, like they're completely different hemispheres. So, like you can't really compare them. I mean, it's definitely good, there's some options that they had before that we missed and I really enjoyed and there's some new, very typical high school, that looks a little weird food, but for the most part, it's pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did get, I did get one complaint that the menu wasn't posted in a timely fashion. I think it was the end of December, so I just cautioned them and I checked the website too at that time. So, I can just caution, make sure we put the, the next month's menu out and enough time for parents to make their plans. Thank you.
Okay, I, I have, I'm sorry.
Are there any other public presentations on any issues?
Good evening.
Did you press the button, just tap it?
Is it red?
Why, it's green, what?
Is the green light on?
It's, the ring should turn red.
She must've got my, my record from last night, yeah.
I'm not really, I'm not a person that is comfortable addressing school wars, again, just getting ahead of the public audience. However, I feel that the time has come for me to not just sit back and complain, but to speak out and tell my concerns for the whole district. I am very much opposed to the tax increase that is being requested. As recently as November of 2015, my husband and I traveled out of state to Tennessee, to be exact, looking for a property to relocate to. We are having trouble with the taxes, taxes increasing, especially since our COLA has not increased. It seems the federal government doesn't think that prices are increasing, but here we are facing the tax increase locally, our school taxes and statewide. We have lived in this township for 46 years, we have raised our children here and have been very happy with the school system. In fact, out of the school system, one of our sons has become a doctor of education and is a principal at an area high school. Therefore, I do understand the position of our educators and their pensions. I understand the cost of education is going up and I also understand that we have a crisis with meeting the pension system of our educators. However, when my husband's pension was starting to become a burden to his employer, his employer did not add to the pension. My husband was expected to put more money away for retirement if he wanted more income on retirement. We did that, but now with the taxes continually being increased, that income is not able to meet our needs as we expected. Again, I understand the cost of education is increasing. However, some of the things that are increasing costs aren't necessarily needed for a fair and proper education for our children. I also understand the position of our educators, especially, especially since I have a son in that field. But at the same time, something has to be done to protect us, the taxpayers, from losing our homes or moving out of state away from our families in order to support ourselves after working all our life. Thank you for your time listening to my opinion. My name is Phyllis Cooper and I live in Douglasville.
Could we have a copy of your statement, please?
I did, I did, it was all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the record, in any of the discussions that I've put, was a member of, that we didn't, finally, we didn't vote on a tax increase, and we don't until the final budget is voted upon, right? Just to be clear, we left ourselves the option of voting a tax increase up to 1.7% mileage and that's it, just the option, right? We're just a panic yet. I know.
So, you guys, thanks for the clarification. I'm too here to discuss the tax increase. I understand the economics, I understand from the teacher's perspective, making a living, teacher interaction, but I have had with my kids has been wonderful. That is not an issue whatsoever. The issue is to do a almost 2% increase, is that, do I have the number correct, close to 2%? Is, there's, are real people behind your actions. The previous board kept our taxes and made it work. Many of us are in the same position where we're having to do, work with what we are making to make ends meet. Maybe we're going without a vacation, maybe we're going without a new car, we're doing what we have to do. I'm not saying jeopardizing education, because that's what's going to lift everybody out to where they, where they can get to. But what I am saying is that we need to take a very serious, serious thought, because as soon as the new board came in, now we have a two, close to 2% increase that's on the table. So, I came here tonight to, well, I'm just one person, I can be, you can be assured there's 50 and 100 more that didn't come out of Chul, with the championship football game on, the senior citizens didn't want to come out, it's just COVID. But I wanted to voice my opinion and put a face with, with how this impacts me. And if you look at our demographics, drive around, with all due respect, we're not a camp of pressure, we're not a high absolute area, we're doing the best that we can with what we have. I urge you to do the best that you can with what you have, keeping the line on the budget. Listening to that letter, I had to agree with the majority of you. I know what I do with my new budget and I urge you to consider that when you take these votes, know that there's real people behind here. My mother lives in the township also, she didn't get a cost of living adjustment and it always seems to be the weakest link. Where can we go, the weakest link to get the money? Well, we'll, we'll raise someone's taxes. Well, it dribbles, it dribbles, it dribbles and I'm bad enough and I'm up here and I thank you very much for listening to my point of view.
Sir, do we have your name and address, please?
Vince Kerschner, Red Corner Road.
Vince Kerschner, Red Corner Road in Douglasville, Pennsylvania.
I'm a little shorter. Um, Laurel, Rena, 367 by Kidlet. Um, first of all, as somebody who's been committee organizing, I want to say thank you. In the words of a former superintendent, we always have three lovers to pull when it comes to the budget and we've had a history of only using two. And I know between now and June, many things are going to change, but I appreciate the fact that every revenue source is left on the table, just as every expense is still left on the table. I also have an action plan for Mrs. Bates. Um, I happen to notice the cheerleading, and cheerleading is a very foreign word to me, that the students are paying to go to the PIA double A championship. My understanding that's the highest that they can go within PIA double A. If the students are paying themselves to go to this, I'm assuming it's because it's an overnight, they're paying for their hotel and the food. I would like to see a policy established because, pretty sure in the spring it's gonna come up again, TSA will make somebody go to nationals, OM, maybe we'll have somebody go to Worlds, which is the highest level they can go. And it will be asked, will you help with transportation, will you help with DMO? I'd like to see if the district can come up with a policy. If a student gets to that highest level in the state-recognized category, if the district assists them, we've had student swimmers go to states, they've had to pay their own way to get to that again. We had two people make it to the state chorus. That's incredible because of all the steps you go through. They paid their own way, are marching men. Whatever the governing body is for the state, if we make it to the highest level of the championship, I'd like to see the district assist those students, even if it's middle, something to help them, because we are representing Daniel Boone.
Thank you. I'd be glad to have Rich for us to discuss on that fundraiser and I'd love your assistance and I would love to form that policy.
Just let me know when meeting is.
Will do, thank you.
Kristin Schmoyer, 113, Farmington Park. Just had a few questions. Um, again, we were to discuss raising the debt for the 2016-17 calendar year. Mr. Kurz, you had talked about two AP courses that were gonna be offered. Can you tell me what those two courses are?
I'd like to defer to Mr. Bede the exact names, if you have any. Hey, can you, uh, several AP research, or the AP, AP pass on?
Okay. And then, um, Mr. Harris, you also spoke about Penn State Berks and their STEM program or how they were gonna work with Daniel Boone with STEM, do I have that correct? How you were talking about all the colleges that you were trying to get together with Daniel Boone?
Penn State is, I'm, I'm sorry, well, I said Rosemont, Albarnia, Pitts Down and we're working on Penn State Berks now.
Okay, I, I just wrote down STEM, so I, I had...
He said that Rosemont was interested in, in our STEM program.
Okay, so, do we have a STEM program?
We're building one, slowly building one.
Because Downingtown has a STEM academy, OMJ has a STEM program. Being a, a parent of a student that's a 10th grade that is on a STEM track, I would like to see that advanced sooner than later. This is important for these kids for their, you know, continuing education.
Mr. Rick, I can speak to that.
So, please round the point, Jack, very, can you receive the pathways, please, at one fold and you'll see, you'll see STEM and teachers at the high school, I've seen already, and you know, part of the discussion rests in six different categories. So, yeah, we'll go on how we're understanding of what that was saying.
Oh, yeah, related to, to Daniel Boone, I've seen it in OMJ and also, yeah.
It's been a process and it's incorporated in the new course selection book, handbook for the high school and that's what, you know, we've been discussing and we finally approved and it's being presented to the public on a twice.
So, for parents, will that information be available sooner than later? My, my reason for asking is, my, my kid has seven study halls per week, she's max credits, she has a lot of time on her hands that she can be doing more with. You talked about study halls being a problem. Now, ninth period was supposed to be eliminated, or, study halls were supposed to be eliminated this year and ninth period was supposed to be like an all across-the-board study hall. That dropped off, parents, I wasn't notified about this, so she gets into school with this horrible schedule and we couldn't do anything about it. So, going forward, if she can take these 10 courses or so that are gonna be available through RAC or any of these college classes, she's going into 11th grade next year, I would like to, for the parents, be aware ahead of time so we can track these kids. I mean, I'm sorry, but we pay a lot of taxes here and we are so below where we should be academically, curriculum-wise for these kids. I mean, I'm sorry, I work in Chester County, Downingtown School District, OMJ School District, both have lower taxes than us and they are far surpassing Daniel Boone, by a home of Daniel Boone. I need to know why. If you're gonna raise my taxes, then you need to give my kid more. You know, that's two years here.
Okay, so, let me share with you, we think the process that this comes, as I began last March, the dialogues that have happened. There are other things that have, happened in those conversations and I think any good process is in concert with community parents and some of the pieces that have been in play, have that thought, build these pieces that may not have existed before. I too came from a school in Chester County and some of those ideas that coalesce, the things you're talking about, they don't happen overnight. So, we're building it forward and we've had, I think, three, four, you know, public meetings last year, they haven't, I don't know if they're available, those meetings, the activity period piece, really we had a, a couple of citizens are letting me involve and talk about how these things unfold in the current years. The study hall issue has to do with some complexities, staffing-wise and schedule and that is something Minister Curtis helped bring out next week. But I think using that one, it's not about discussing how to do it, it's happening, it's done. We had many meetings where these pieces have been presented and voted on and are moving forward. What we presented on the 26th is the course catalog, the door enrollment opportunity, the pathways model and the early college model and the freshman academy model. So, all these pieces are now happening and hopefully it's...
Okay, and you had also stated that many of them were lower no-cost options to the district?
Well, it's about restructuring, the, the cost neutral or cost minimal, I won't say zero dollars, but everything, we'll, we'll vote for the board, not a decision till we invest our money there or our, 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 but it really is about reorganization of many course ability habits into these pathways. Most of this work has, courses are already there, so it's about aligning them and certainly providing options for students. So, the ninth and 10th years are probably have the most advantage in this gap of mine. It'll take some time to realize that we're on the gap of mine. While you have to back, the 11th and 12th graders next year going forward will have the most advantage taking the door enrollment. So, that is not a cost neutral reason, many door enrollment in any district, OMJ, Community City, grade 8, 9, you pay for the door enrollment, free credits, but of course happens, either whether you actually take the door enrollment or you're sitting there and just getting credit, which is right.
Sure, but that falls on the parents, correct?
Correct.
So, it doesn't fall on the district? See, I'm looking at, we're raising taxes, so this is a...
But door enrollment, door enrollment piece is a cost any district, that is not a pass moment, that the numbers are paid for the door enrollment.
True.
Okay, so that's...
Right, so I'm saying, so if my, if my child was in the door enrollment, that I'm paying a cost for her, if that...
Correct, three credits, I mean, three credits.
Correct. So, that's why I'm looking at, okay, where are we getting this tax increase from? If we're getting more, we're getting a lower no-cost or the parents are paying the burden to pay that too.
Part of the way we got to make some more offerings at cost neutral is we're offering some classes every other year. So, your daughter being 11th grade, she won't be exposed to some in 11th grade, but then they'll be offered in 12th grade. And it's kind of cost neutral to us and it's going to us, well, but the offerings are richer for students. It's a, it's a work in progress.
True.
I'm gonna say, a work that we're very, Curriculum Committee in particular and working with the administration are very proud to put the school district on this path, but I assure you, we hope through the budget, it'll get that more and more robust so that...
Does the public have access to...
That's my question, is your plan to publicize the handbook after the presentation or when does it get posted on the website?
So, I want to have the meeting with students because I think the, the consumer's up first, then I want to have the parents, so the book will go live and Mr. Matt's is currently working on the interface, those online piece to catalog as well, so we're offering, we have, that, that, more than, and their interactive one. So, obviously February 1st, just to say, February 1st, it'll be fully available online and everything. But I want to have the dialogue, is if you put information out there first, now the chance to present, then in kind of branding that a little bit less, where a lot of information was misrepresented, and I, I don't want to be good at that, I have to say, I hate it.
Great, thank you for that.
Kristin Schmoyer. I don't know if you heard Mr. Kurz earlier, but I, I too have some concerns about study halls, especially if your child has seven per week, which I think is excessive. I'm not a member of the curriculum committee, I intend to be there as a member of the public just to get involved in this discussion. Mr. Kurz, when is that meeting in here?
That meeting, I believe, I believe it's the 22nd of January, I'll, I'll check it out right now, it's in the agenda.
It's two weeks from tonight.
25th, you're right, thank you, Mr. Kurz.
So, there's...
25th?
25th.
So, there's a meeting. So there's a meeting, you may want to attend.
Any other public comment?
I'm also not an expert.
Can you say your name and address?
My name is Rick Langford, I'm about to stop. First of all, I agree with Mr. Speed's letter. Even when that lady said in southern graves, I'm not saying southern graves, even taxpayers are saying it's I. I was hoping she would be here, and here we evolve. But also, the legend, Mr. Martino, right, he was a state teacher.
He was from the School Board Association.
I noticed everything he said was the Republican legislature, but he didn't say the Democrat wolf. So you left that mark out, so I know where that's coming. I also have a question, cost of living increases for teachers, how often do they get them? Do they get them like yearly? I noticed in a contract, started.
That's a negotiation that takes place between the board and the education association?
Do they generally get them like every year?
It's whatever's negotiated, we're in negotiation with the education association right now. The five-year agreement that was signed in 2008 expired this past year, so I think there was one year that was pushed, so it became a six-year total agreement. But in that was a yearly increase plus what was called step in movement, step is your years of service, movement is sort of level of education, and every time you move a step or movement, there's a percentage attached to that, too.
That contract, Mr. Cooper calls for, the raises Mr. Wolf just discussed, it's not based on the federal cost of living?
Right. And, and also.
Yeah, it is, I believe the contract is still posted on.
Well, again, I retired in 2009, six years now, and three of those six years, I did not get a cost of living increase because of social security law. I didn't want it. So my taxes are going up, but I'm not getting a cost of living increase that like, great with working people. So that's why I'm trying to nip this in the bud as far as any proposed tax increases. I'm opposed to it. My last thing is, Mr. O'Neill, I believe he was hired to be a teacher, I don't know of any other, I'm regarded. I would ask that Mr. O'Neill do a ethical, moral thing, and recuse himself of any vote for.
Mr. O'Neill has recused himself of being part of the negotiations or being a participant in the discussed negotiation with that group, and he's done that voluntarily, although he has the right to do so.
I appreciate that. I wasn't aware of this last night.
The time's expired, if you could, please drop it down.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good morning, my name is Andrew J. Kentsey, I am the police chief of AMI. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to be here this evening. I don't have any long, elongated speeches, but what I would like to say is, the police department and the school board to be a lot more interactive. Apparently, in past practice, there hasn't been a tremendous amount of communication with the school and the police department. My vision for the future is to improve upon that. I'm accessible, I'm available, I'm going to be at every meeting I can possibly be at to obtain as much information as I possibly can, because education is important, the safety of our student, and our faculty is important, and I'm going to be here as much as I possibly can to do everything I can. And thank you very much again for having me here this evening, great rodeo experience, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Before you walk away, I've met you a couple times at the M.A. Township meetings.
Yes, sir.
And I wanted you to know, earlier last year, we actually honored the local police departments and the state police who serve our area. This school board and administration is 100% in support of the police departments, and personally, I say anybody that doesn't support the police should try living without them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Is there any other public comments?
I would like to finish up. I would just like to say two things. One, I think it's very smart, Mr. and Mrs. Cooper, you get two plates of the apple, like, coming up separate, that's great, I think that's terrific. Let me just address something to the people that have talked opposing taxes, and Mrs. Bates touched on it. What took place was a preliminary budget, and I'll be very honest, the board, if you had attended the meeting, you would see the board is split on raising taxes. Unfortunately, the split was in favor of the preliminary plan to raise taxes. Part of the discussion was to provide flexibility so as not to restrict ourselves should the state not come through with the money we're anticipating. Personally, I think everybody knows how I feel about raising taxes. The budget, which I believe is online, Mr. Small, the preliminary budget that's online, you'll see, we've always preached that we wanted to end the year with at least $2 million in the fund balance. This year we'll end with four, next year, everything being equal, we'll end with three, and the following year we'll end with almost two, and that's without looking at, do we need all the teachers we have, that's without looking at, do we do anything with our facilities? So the preliminary budget talks about raising taxes. I think it would be very wise to continue to come out and follow the progression either at the finance committee meetings and/or the board meetings for the next. You only have five months until June, so you're looking at a couple meetings a month. But that's where we are with taxes. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, when I first got on the board, you know, there was discussions about, you know, raising taxes, and quite frankly, with the amount that was being discussed to raise taxes, we actually, the district actually pushed that as, as a, unused money from the previous year, so we wound up with a surplus, that's the word I was looking for, that was equal to what was being proposed as a tax increase. And that pretty much came from the fact that we did not have a really good handle from a financial aspect, as far as what our true expenditures were, how our costs were being controlled, and, you know, quite frankly, we were spending a lot of money on contracts for which we were not getting any benefit, or very little benefit. Now, we've had some transition in the business group over the last two years, and when we started, we actually got a five-year budget, which was something we were trying to achieve when I first started here, four years ago. So we finally got a five-year budget, we have a good idea where our financials are going to be going forward, as far as some of the expenditures and the revenue, we can't control, but we're, you know, we have to take some guesses, we got some good cost avoidance that we put in place as far as looking at these contracts, are we getting the value out of them that we're paying for? Several hundred thousand dollars have been saved or cost avoided. And then we started looking into, we had a tax swap, the interest swap that, trying to call it the name of this, that was costing here. And that was actually costing the district money. We bailed out of that, saved ourselves some money, as you heard last year, and again this year, we're refinancing bonds that were pulled when the construction projects were going forward in the district, and those are higher yield bonds, like the 5%, 6%, and obviously now we're cutting those rates almost in half, so we're saving $700,000, what was it, $900,000 this year. So, but what my point is, every year, we're picking off different things, we're doing a very good handle on our financials now. So I have a lot of confidence in what our five-year budget model looks like, which we didn't have before. So I was very supportive in the first two years of not raising taxes. And as we started seeing what the five-year budget was shaping up to be, I became less secure in how many of these low-hanging pieces of fruit in the district file, how many things can we, we've cut programs, we've, you know, because of enrollments dropped, we've had to right-size staff, there's an argument being made that maybe we overdid that a little bit, but that those decisions were made to try and save money. So we've done a lot of things, we've eliminated a lot of the fact that we've had in our budget. We've asked the buildings to consolidate contingencies money instead of having a contingency budget for each building, now there's one for the district. A lot of creative things have been done to try and save money and drive it back into the program to save it. Now, every year, the pension fight has been put on the district to between about $1 million. So we're paying about $1 million each year, more than the previous year, and, you know, we're paying for that by savings that we're finding and digging up. Now, my worry has been, how much of that is left? How much of that stone can we squeeze and get more blood out? And if you look at our five-year budget, the one thing that'll jump out at you is that there's 0% increase for teachers for the next five years. Now, is that realistic? I don't know. We're in discussion with our teachers now. What the outcome of those negotiations will have a tremendous impact on our budget. But you can't go back in time and raise taxes for something that you've already made the decision not to. So we have to, you know, whether it's pleasant to hear or not, I think you have to look at it, somehow, these programs have, need to be paid for. We need to open the schools, we're spending a lot of money to look at, are we using the building efficiently? Are we, wherever can we save a little bit here and there, and try to do the best job that we can? So when we come to the taxpayer and says, we need more money from you, it's because we did all those other things before we came back and asked you to take more money out of your pocket. But, you know, there's, like I said, going back to the teacher's contract, you know, that'll have a tremendous impact on our budget, depending on what the agreement is. So, you know, we have to be financially sound with what our facts are, what our expenses are, and what our revenues are. And we're not getting any, we're not getting a large increases from the state, as you heard, Mr. Martino mentioned that the money that was released by the governor, which is the same budget that was produced in June, the formula somehow magically changed, and we wound up with less. So I heard there is maybe a lawsuit to try and reconcile that, but there again, we're, here we are in January, we just got our money. So there's a lot of things that, and I was personally against raising taxes above the index, I would never vote for a tax, an increase over the index, so I didn't want to vote for the accession. Should there have been a tax increase over the last year? You can argue that point. But, so there's a lot of things going on. I guess the point I really would like everyone to know is, we have a really good business model, we have a good business manager taking a look at these things, we're trying to think out of the box to save money every place we can, because these programs have to be paid for, someone's going to pay for it. State's not going to pay for it, then there's got to be a cut. If you can't cut things, then you have to pass along the tax increase. For me, I'm done cutting any kind of program. I won't vote for any more tax, program cuts. So at this point, where's the money going to come from? That's what we're going to find out, we'll go the next five months.
Can I just add something for public consumption, follow-up? The tax, the budget discussion cycle is driven by the PDE filing dates. So stay tuned, register soon. So since we opted out of opting out of the exception, we are on a different, it's called the short cycle.
Early budgets.
Early budget cycle, so Mr. Small will bring things to the committee for discussion, finance committee, and ultimately to the whole board, based on those forms that he has to have filed with PDE all along, that ultimately will result in a finalized budget by June 30th. So, and secondly, if you want to be on the same page with us, and look at the numbers that we're looking at, the five-year budget is out there, I can't encourage it enough. Look at it, see what we're looking at, because what we're looking at is a deteriorating fund budget, that people are talking about raising taxes for this year. And thirdly, will we be having a full budget presentation as we have in the past, from the business department?
Finance committee.
On the preliminary? And it is at this phase, it is a local progress, stay tuned to budget, to the agenda for the finance committee.
There'll be a budget presentation at every finance committee, and then we'll come forward.
I mean, drop down, you know, numbers up, the whole projector thing that in the past we've sort of gotten them to have it up, please consider that, thank you.
All right. I think when we're ready to do a drop-down budget presentation, I think the meeting should probably be at the middle school, where you have a screen and.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot easier to look at the numbers than to hear, you know, speak about numbers and just hard for the public to follow. I 100% agree. Plus, the seats are come more comfortably.
Yeah, thank you.
One bit of irony, the first Tuesday in February, which is three weeks away, Governor Wolf has to make his budget presentation for next year.